No, he's on there.
He's on there.
Welcome everyone to Elizabeth Town City Council Regular Meeting for June 16th, 2025, and I'd like to ask Councilwoman Julia Springsteen if she'd lead us in the indication, please.
After two, let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office and employment in the city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. That with steadfast purpose we may faithfully serve in our positions to promote the well-being of all people. Give us your strength to live together with respect for our neighbors, and we ask that you protect those serving in the military, our first responders, and healthcare professionals as they face daily challenges in their mission to protect us through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
If you join me in the pledge, I pledge to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will kick it off with approval of minutes from June 2nd. I love it. All in favor? Opposed? Sing none, motion carries. I want to make a reappointment to the Historic Preservation Commission, Charlie Bryant, for a term to end June 30th, 2028, if you all think he has enough experience and things like that.
I think that it's historic works well for him.
Historic works well for Charlie. Very good. And he will be reappointed. And with that, Judge Howard, we will go to Resolution Number 3, 2025, support a petition to the State of Kentucky Alcohol Beverage Control Board for additional quota retail package licenses. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Judge Howard.
Whereas the city recognizes the need to support local businesses and to provide greater access to retail alcohol sales, and whereas the current quota for retail package licenses has reached its limit and there is a demonstrated demand for additional licenses to meet the needs of the community, and whereas the issuance of an additional quota retail package license will promote economic growth and enhance consumer convenience within the city, now therefore be it resolved by the city council as follows. Number one, the city council hereby authorizes the advertisement, application, and for the city to furnish all required documentation for additional quota retail package licenses for an increase not to exceed the ratio of one per every 2,000 residents as provided by law for the sale of alcoholic beverages within the city limits of Elizabeth Town. Two, any recipients of the additional quota retail package license must comply with all applicable state and local laws, regulations, and ordinances governing the sale of alcoholic beverages. Three, the city ABC administrator shall oversee the application process for the additional quota retail package licenses for the city. The Department of Alcohol Beverage Control of the State of Kentucky will ensure transparency and fairness in the selection of the licensee. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. This is a reading and is now available for your consideration.
Any discussion?
Do you think Jessica, I know we discussed it last week, but we just want to put it out there, this is for the package, not on-premise consumption, so can you kind of...
Oh, yes. It is only for quota package stores, which we would traditionally call liquor store, not on-premise consumption.
So to define that for people that don't understand, that doesn't mean a restaurant, and it's not a license for Rafferty's or Drake's. This is for liquor stores that sell...
Distilled spirits, wine, and malt beverages. And by law, by state law, it is the only license that is still set by quota.
And again, to use your example, grocery stores are one of...
Well, a grocery store cannot sell distilled spirits. They can only sell malt beverages. Now they can have a separate entry or a separate store, like Kroger has a separate store for a package store.
So this is kind of one of the things when we talk about recruiting or, you know, soliciting ourselves to grocery stores, one of the things that they request, or to...
So a lot of grocery stores do want that separate package store. They want that availability if they advertise that way, or if that's their business model.
So if we're going to pursue, we feel like there's a strong need for grocery on the south end. This would be a potential enticement to some people that may not have shown as much interest in the past?
Well, we think it would definitely be a hindrance if it was a possibility that they could open with a packaged liquor store onsite. It's easier to recruit if they have the availability or the option or the possibility of also opening a packaged liquor store onsite, because most grocery chains are doing that now.
I think it's, we need to point out, though, we don't have any control over those.
That is correct.
It's all the state and how they issue those out. Those four could go, or they could hold, right?
It's all up to the state. Yes, sir.
Yes. So all four could get issued, and that won't not help us if we were trying to do something on the south side.
That is the possibility.
As Tim mentioned. But yeah, so there's no guarantee on a hold.
Yeah, that was one of my initial concerns. Were we potentially just a little premature? If that would be a potential incentive to somebody to come in on the south side?
You would have to have them available. So it's a chicken and egg, I think.
And we don't control any kind of timetable on this either, right?
That is correct. So if the city chooses to do this, then it's up to the state, and their timeline is not generally our time.
And for transparency purposes, just to shoot you straight, more than likely, there's going to be people that want all, however many we add, immediately.
Immediately.
Oh, they'll, I estimate there'll be 20 applications. Realtors have been busy today.
For four, I would say maybe even more than...
Looking for sites.
Because we're at the maximum now. We have 13.
Thirteen, and they're all taken.
The last time we had one license, and we had eight, seven applications?
Correct. Eight.
Eight applications for one license.
Immediately.
Yes. Actually, we had applications before it was advertised in the paper, because some of these people are so savvy, they are watching on, because you can go on the state website and see who has what license. Those are public record. And some people were savvy enough, they're like, oh, that license is going to come up. They did not renew it. And they then immediately started applying.
But my point on the possibility of if we could attract a grocery on the south end is as fast as we're growing, because we are the fastest growing city in the state, if we did have somebody that was interested in coming in the south end, we can tell them, look. And once our population goes up 2,000 more, then we have the ability to apply for another license, which I don't think is going to be that long with the numbers that we have rolling in as far as population growth goes. So we're not as limited or hampered as much. That's my thoughts.
And we talked about the two grocery stores that we know are coming, Publix and the new Kroger. There's currently zero license available for them for a package.
That's correct. There's no license available.
Yes.
Anything else?
Need a motion in a second to adopt, if you all are in agreement.
Motion?
Was this a setup or something?
All in favor? Opposed? Sing none, resolution carries. Thank you all. Thought I was going to be here for a minute.
I did too.
Okay, second reading of ordinance number 15, 2025, adopt budget for fiscal year 25-26, if I can get a motion in a second to read.
Motion. Second.
We're good there, Tim, right?
All in favor? Opposed? Judge Howard.
This ordinance adopts the budget for fiscal year 2025-2026, as required by state law, for the general operation of the city government. The budget contains total funds available of $157,969,480, and total appropriations for expenditures equal to $126,940,521, with an estimated ending fund balance of $31,028,959,000. Full text of this ordinance can be found by contacting the city clerk. As a second reading by summary, it is now available for your consideration.
Any discussion?
I'll just say, as a first-year person, this was a fascinating process, and I just appreciate the way we go about this. I just felt like everything was transparent, and the department heads all came in prepared and just, this had the potential to be very overwhelming, and I didn't feel like it was.
Very good. Anybody else?
The only disagreement we have is over the budget cookies.
Yeah, we needed to get those cookies.
That's a shot at Jessica. Okay, I need a motion in a second to adopt, please. You're much quicker on that one. All in favor? Opposed? I'm sorry, it's a real call though. Councilmember Bisson.
Yes.
Councilmember Folkerson.
Yes.
Councilmember Isaacs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Springsteen.
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler. Motion carries, 6-0. Thank you all. We'll move on to municipal order number 35, 2025, to reappoint Steve Rice to the Planning Commission. If I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Motion.
All in favor? Opposed?
Steve wanted me to vote no, but I'm not.
Judge Howard.
A regular meeting of the city council held on the date set out below. A motion to read and adopt the following municipal order was duly made, seconded, and approved. Whereas the mayor of the city, as required by law, wishes to reappoint Steve Rice to the Planning Commission for a term to expire on June 20 of 2029. Now be it ordered by the city council that Steve Rice is approved for reappointment to the Planning Commission for a term to expire June 20th of 2029. It's further ordered that the mayor and/or his designee is hereby authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order, read, adopted, and approved the 16th day of June.
Any discussion? So I will say, Steve's been our chairman, Ed, 20-something years, and the Planning Commission is an appointed board. We have several in the city, but they probably are the busiest and definitely meet the most and take the most heat from the public for volunteers. So Steve, for years, has run a tremendous meeting, and he's studied, he's well-versed on our planning rules and policies and what we are allowed to do in the city of Elizabeth Town, and he cares about it. And so he's been a real asset. I know Marty was talking about voting no against him, but he's been a real asset, and we're thrilled that he's re-upped for another four years, because he's benefited the city for sure.
And he runs a good hearing.
He does. So.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Sing none. Steve is back. Municipal Order Number 36, 2025, reappoint Jacob Vittito to the Code Enforcement Board, if I can get a motion in a second to read, please.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Judge Howard.
At a regular meeting of the city council held on the date set out below, after first being read, a motion to adopt the following municipal order was duly made, seconded, and approved. Whereas the mayor of the city wishes to reappoint Jacob Vittito to the Code Enforcement Board with a term to expire on July 7th of 2028. Now be it ordered by the city council that Jacob Vittito is approved for reappointment to the Code Enforcement Board for a term to expire on July 7th of 2028. Be it further ordered that the mayor and/or his designee is hereby authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order, read, adopted, and approved the 16th day of June.
Any discussion? Need a motion in a second to adopt, please.
Motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Sing none, motion carries. And now is where we get into the interesting stuff, and it's all because of Don Hill. Municipal Order Number 37, 2025, accepting bid for pavement striping for 25-26, if I can get a motion in a second to read. Judge Howard.
Aye.
All in favor? All opposed? Judge Howard.
It's your first time. It's okay.
They switched pages on me. It wasn't your fault.
Unless there's an objection, I'm going to read these by summary.
Please.
Whereas the city prepared big documents and received public bids on June 5th of 2025 for pavement striping for fiscal year 25-26. Be it ordered the city accept the bid from Reynolds Ceiling and Striping Incorporated for pavement striping for fiscal year 25-26 in the amount of 35 cents per linear foot. Be further ordered that the mayor and/or his designee is authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order, read, adopt, and approve the 16th day of June.
Any discussion? Don, with all four of these, were you pretty pleased with those prices?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think that's all.
Very good. I need a motion in a second to adopt, please.
Motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Municipal Order 38, 2025, accepting bid for bituminous concrete crush stone for 25-26, if I can get a motion in a second to read. All in favor? Opposed? Judge Howard.
Whereas the city prepared bid documents and received public bids on June 5th of 2025 for bituminous concrete and hauling, labor, and equipment for crushed stone for fiscal year 25-26. Now be it ordered the city accept the bid from Scotty's Contracting and Stone LLC for bituminous concrete for fiscal year 25-26 as follows, and then there is a series of pricing for bituminous concrete, both laid within the city limits using virgin materials and recycled materials, and then bituminous concrete picked up at the plant, again categorized by virgin materials and recycled materials. Be it further ordered that the mayor and/or his designee is authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order, read, adopted, and approved the 16th day of June.
Need discussion? Need a motion in a second to adopt, please.
Motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Municipal Order 39, 2025, accepting bid for pavement milling fiscal year 25-26, if I can get a motion in a second to read.
Motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Judge Howard.
Whereas the city prepared bid documents and received public bids on June 5th of 2025 for pavement milling for fiscal year 25-26. Now be it ordered the city accepts the bid of Scotty's Contracting and Stone LLC for pavement milling for fiscal year 25-26 in the amount of $40 per ton. Be it further ordered that the mayor and/or his designee is authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order, read, adopted, and approved the 16th day of June.
Any discussion?
Scotty's other one bid?
Yes.
See why they got it, wouldn't they? Need a motion in a second, please.
Motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Sing none, motion carries. Municipal Order Number 40, 2025, accepting bid for crushed limestone fiscal year 25-26, if I can get a motion in a second to read, please. All in favor? Opposed? Judge Howard.
Whereas the city prepared bid documents and received public bids on June 5th of 2025 for crushed limestone for fiscal year 25-26. Now be it ordered the city accept the bids from Scotty's Contracting and Stone LLC and for Heidelberg Materials for crushed limestone for fiscal year 25-26 as follows. This is two bids that are both being accepted for the following categories. Crushed limestone, channel lining, both class two and class three, surge rock, dense grade aggregate, maintenance grade, and dense grade aggregate meets Kentucky Department of Transportation specifications, pugged dense grade aggregate and hauling, labor, and equipment for stone in place and compacted to grade. Be it further ordered that the mayor and/or his designee is hereby authorized and directed to take all steps necessary to perfect this order, read, adopted, and approved the 16th day of June.
Judge, I'm assuming that the reason it was those companies is because of the availability of products for one particular...
I'm going to try to do it in summary. No, what we've ran into in the past is just depending on the demand for the stone for paving or asphalt products, is that sometimes Scotty's will run a little lean. The other thing is, is price and location. So you've got, Scotty's plant is in Vine Grove, so we go pick the material up there, and we use a tremendous amount of stone in our operations in the city for all the different departments. So if we're working on the south end of town and just the transportation cost, it sometimes pays to go to Heidelberg, but also in the bids this year, probably 60-40 prices at Heidelberg was actually less expensive per ton than Scotty's. We've also asked Scotty's, and they agree that if we have a project or a parking lot, something similar to that, where Scotty's would haul it, compact it, and put it in place, they would also do, they would use Heidelberg's materials, so.
Comment section, I'm going to invite my friend Lisa Williams to the podium to talk to us about Friends of Harden County Animal Shelter SNP Clinic.
All right, thank you. Glad I was back on fiscal court there for a while. Wanted to book a time with you. It's hard not to. So just some quick information about Focus, the Friends of Harden County Animal Shelter, which Julia is very familiar with. She's served on the board for many years, now on the board forever now. And hopefully we've all gotten an invitation to an event coming up. I think Julia has pushed those out. But Focus has been around for many years, and our main goal, we do all for the benefit of animals in Harden County, but the main goal being the spay and neuter program, the low-cost program for folks that can't normally afford to have their animals fixed. So we've been doing that for years, one day a week out at the Harden County Animal Shelter. And doing that one day a week, we still have a waiting list of four to five months of people that want to get their animals fixed. So that's not good. So we have wanted for a long time, and I think Julia can say, back me up, that we have wanted to get our own facility. We'll still do it out at the animal shelter. We'll still do all the work that we do, of course, to support the animal shelter. We're not in competition with any kind of vets, but we want to open our own facility where we can kind of get that five-month waiting list caught up and stay on top of it and do a lot of other good works. So we have had a wonderful person step up and donate a space to us. We have a long-term lease, you know, for like a dollar a year, so we have a great spot. It is up right on the border of Radcliffe, so it's convenient for people in E-Town, Radcliffe, Vine Grove. So we are working to remodel the facility. It needs a lot of work to turn it into a SNP spot. So we're working on that, but that doesn't come cheap. So we need some money. So we are having a capital campaign kickoff to do our remodeling and to buy the equipment that's needed. We plan to open in the fall. We're working on it now. We have funding that, you know, we can get started on it. So we're working diligently right now, with the goal of maybe September being open. And when we do that, we'll be open a couple of days a week. And again, this is low cost for folks that can't afford to have their animals fixed. And this helps all of us in Harden County, because that relieves the pressure on the animal shelter that we taxpayers pay for, the county animal shelter. So we want to reduce the pet population any way that we can. So anyway, we plan to do a lot of things there, hopefully scale it up even more, but we'll start out a couple of days a week. So we are having this capital campaign kickoff next Tuesday, the 24th, at the Brown Pusie House from 5:30 to 7:30. So we invite you all to come by, and anyone else that would like to come by, write us a check. Come by and have a drink, a snack, and write us a check, and we'll all be happy. So if anybody has any questions about, and it's going to be called the SNP spot, so...
What's your campaign goal?
We need about 150,000. And since we've announced it, we've already raised probably close to 15, so we're hoping with next week, we can really raise some really good money.
Very good.
Yeah. Anybody else have any questions? No? All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, we're going to talk city council information items. Our next meeting will be June 23rd, 2025, and I want to talk a minute about the success of our South Korean delegation visit last week. We were thrilled to sign a friendship agreement with So Sun City. Their mayor and some of his staff came to visit us. They went to Chicago for a couple days, and then they flew into Louisville on Tuesday night. We picked them up at the airport, and then had them all day Wednesday, and then they flew back, or they flew to New York from Louisville on Thursday. But during their visit here, we really enjoyed their time and their company. Their kindness is unparalleled. They're fine people, and they had a great time. I think that it was a huge success, just because they were able to see that we wanted them to be here, and we wanted to be friends with them. So I want to thank Jessica and Jody and Amy Enman and Melissa Neppe for the great work that they did for several weeks to make sure that that was pulled off successfully. I guess what I took the most away from, and Ed talked a little bit about it this morning as well in our department head meeting, they kept commenting on how safe they felt and how clean our city was, and how pretty it was, and how well they thought it was engineered and put together. And so, you know, you have people come in from around the country that are used to being in the United States, and they may tell you something about your city or compliment it, and you think, well, that was nice. But when you have people that come from a whole another country, thousands of miles away, across the pond, and they don't know a whole lot about the United States, and they see our city, and they think all of those things initially when they get here, and they want to leave you with that when they leave, I thought that was pretty nice. Because when we dropped them off at the hotel Wednesday night, which was the last time that I saw them, they told me that they felt like they were at home all day, and that they wish they didn't have to leave so soon. I thought that was pretty nice. But we really enjoyed them. They're smart people. We're going to have the opportunity to learn a lot from them. We're going to plan a reciprocal trip with them in the near future that we're looking forward to, but hopefully we'll have many years of successful friendship and be able to learn from each other and hopefully do some business. We'll see how it goes. Your thoughts, comments?
I think it was well organized. It was nice to have the chamber lunch and the lawn party for them to see as well.
The only...
Go through that.
Yeah. Only regret I have is I will tell you, the language barrier was tough. I was not used to that. I had an interpreter in my hip pocket most of the day trying to talk with them, but it's hard to get to know them on a personal level when you have that language barrier and find out about their family and what they like to do. And we were talking business most of the time, and they were asking about things that were going on in our town and the way we handle things and how our government's set up, but I didn't really get on a personal level with them. I didn't feel like, as much as I would have liked to, and that's because of the language barrier in some regards and time constraints, but we had a great day. We had a lot of fun.
I guess it's over to Duolingo.
Yeah, I guess so. I'm going to brush up on my Korean. I don't know if I can figure that out before the end of the year, but. So Major Richardson, if you would introduce our next guest, if you will, although he's not a guest, tell us what you all have going on at the PD and what we're doing here today.
Yes, sir. We're doing a promotion for James Rogers. He's being promoted to sergeant. So James came to us in 2022 as a lateral transfer from... So James came to us in two thousand and twenty-two as a lateral transfer from a suburb of Chicago and very quickly proved how valuable he was, experience he had, his case experience from working up there. Uh, very quickly became a training officer for us for some of our new rookies to teach them how to do policing the way we want it done, to the values of our agency. He also served as our, on our accident recon team and has worked several fatal collisions as a result of that and done a tremendous job. As part of the five-year growth plan a few years back, the council gave us an additional sergeant's position to fill a flex sergeant, to create a new unit within the department. Sergeant Mertz has taken over that flex unit next week, and so that leaves a vacancy on midnight shift and that is where James volunteered to go. So he went through the promotional, promotional process, did a fabulous job and we're very proud of him today and the best advice I can give you is take care of your people and lead them the way we want them.
Thanks, sir.
How about we do it in front of the class? You didn't mention the part that you knew that he was tough right off the bat because his Charlie Craig of Son of a. Okay, you would, raise your hand. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue as citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office therefore said according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I being a citizen of this state, have not fought a bill with deadly weapons within this state nor have, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge. To fight a bill with deadly weapons nor have I acted as second in carrying a challenge nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help me God. Congratulations.
Where are you gonna have pinion?
Not Charlie, right?
It doesn't count unless you draw blood.
Well, if she does it, then I have no longer points.
Mayor, I also would like to thank the PD, uh, for this past weekend, the Lions of Kentucky, uh, came and had a training session at the community room at the PD. They thought it was a great fantastic facility. I told them they can only go so far. I couldn't let them go any further. Very secure. They thought it was so secure, but a well-maintained facility and, and the, everyone was just, that was there was friendly to them. Uh, I told them we had a busy weekend and we did and, and, uh, and so, uh, appreciate you all for letting us here.
Did y'all have stuff going on this weekend? Nope, we have the best of the best and everybody tells me that. Okay, so we are going to close meeting pursuant to care at six one point eight one zero, section one, to conduct deliberation on future acquisition or sale of real property by the city and to discuss personnel which might lead to the appointment discipline or dismissal of an individual, if I can get a motion in a second, please.
Motion. Second.
Do we just somehow have lawsuits we used to have?
Oh, all in favor? Opposed? And we may have action coming out.
I like the lawsuits.
Attorney. There's an attorney saying that she likes spending a lot of her money.
Thanks, Lisa. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Lisa.
Motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Municipal Order Number 412025 authorizing purchase of property at 303 Guthrie Street. If I can get a motion in a second to read.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, adjourned.
Whereas the city has for many years worked toward redevelopment and stabilization of the Haycraft neighborhood under the CDBG program, and whereas through property acquisition efforts, the city desires to create housing opportunities and to create public open space adjoining the city-owned Buffalo Lake, and whereas the city has offered to purchase property at 303 Guthrie Street for the preservation of the existing housing stock and the potential for the creation of future open space in the neighborhood, and the owners of said property are willing to sell. Now being ordered by the City Council, the city purchased the property at 303 Guthrie Street from Mary Catherine Smith in the amount of $140,000. Being further ordered, the mayor and/or his designee is authorized to sign all agreements, contracts, deeds, closing documents, and forms to perfect this order, including having a title report and Phase One environmental review of the property to be purchased. Read, adopted, and approved this sixteenth day of June of 2025.
Dean, discuss. Need a motion in a second to adopt, please?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now I need a motion in a second to adjourn.
Only if Jessica walks me out with an umbrella.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have two umbrellas in my car.
We are adjourned.
I do too.
Thank you all.
I did too.
I tell you what, if somebody just would give me one, we're all.